Would you please stand? We're going to have a moment of silence and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance and also do the invocation. I'd like to have a moment of silence this evening for those who were injured and lost their lives in El Paso, Texas, and also in Dayton, Ohio.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this gathering this evening, and we ask that you help us along the way as we do the challenge business and allow us to make the proper and correct decisions. We ask this in your name. Amen. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have two minor adjustments. The first is under the consent agenda, just in the wording, under item 3A, instead of warranty acceptance, it should read final acceptance. And the second, we have one employee that is unable to be here tonight for their introduction would ask that we remove from the list Pedro Aruda. He will be introduced at a future council meeting.
Thank you all. Note those adjustments. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
We approve.
Second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the one adjustment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda are administrative items. Our first item is recommendation of appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes, there are several vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Staff and the liaison have done interviews and they are recommending that Ronald Correa be appointed with, to fill an unexpired term that would expire on December 31st, 2020, and Mike, Mark Morgan, excuse me, to fill an unexpired term that would expire December 31st of 2021, and he would fill an ETJ position.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Second, to approve the appointments as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five, introductions and special presentations. And we'll start with Chief Blair Mahin.
Thank you, Michael Granis, and council. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing a couple employees to you. We have three, but one is on her way back from Smithfield right now. She was working today and still working, so hopefully she'll make it here shortly, but I told her not to rush with the weather. So to my right here, immediate right, is Corey Sedino. Corey came to us from Asheville PD where he's got five years' experience. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Tennessee, although I did clarify, he is not a Vols fan, so don't hold that against him. He is married. His wife is an assistant district attorney here in Johnston County, and he is also a first lieutenant with the North Carolina Army National Guard where he serves as a military police officer. I will introduce Morgan, although she's not here. Morgan is from the mountains, but she moved to Benson a couple years ago. She, before I forget, all three of the ones that I will introduce all live in Clayton. They're all local to our community here. But Morgan moved to Benson a few years ago and ultimately here recently to Clayton. She also has a bachelor's of criminal justice from Lee's McCray College, and she is fresh out of BLET where she went to, attended at JCC. And she also lives here in Clayton, and she said it's her lifetime goal to be a police officer. She's very excited, so she doesn't get an opportunity to tell you that. She's very happy to be here, and she's been working since the day we swore her in, pretty much. So, and last but not least, our most recent hire is Chad Mallett. He is originally from La Plata, Maryland, moved to Sneed's Ferry when he was a teenager. He has a bachelor's degree from Campbell University in Homeland Security with a specialization in criminal justice. He also lives in town, and he is in the Coast Guard Reserve where he is a Gunner's Mate Third Class. He's stationed in Wilmington. From what I understand, Gunner's Mate Third Class is a pretty, pretty big deal. So, I'm happy to have these folks on board. I will make note that the hiring of Chad, he's the most recent hiree, makes us a 100% strength. So I think it's a rare thing that law enforcement agencies in today's date are 100%. Unfortunately, it only lasts for about a month because we've got a retirement coming up, but I'm going to hold on to it for as long as we can. So without further ado, I'll let them say their couple words.
Corey, you first.
Just wanted to say thank you for welcoming to the community, giving me an opportunity to work, serve the community here. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity. I've always wanted to serve. That's why I joined the Coast Guard. That's why I want to be a cop. So thank you very much. I hope to serve you well.
Well, we certainly appreciate you joining us, and we certainly appreciate what you do for us. Thank you very much.
And before I relinquish the mic, I'd like to make a public complaint against the fire chief for trying to steal my police officers and make them firemen again. So just, I'm throwing it out there.
Next would be our planning director, Samantha Wollanwaber.
Good evening, Samantha Wollanwaber, Planning Director. And my apologies, Josh is unexpectedly not here tonight, so he will be at the next council meeting. He's feeling under the weather.
Okay. Next will be our senior building inspector, code inspector, Robert Yarborough.
Good evening, council members. I'm here this evening to introduce our newest employee with the town of Clayton that will be filling a vacant position that was left open a couple of months ago, Brandon Lee. Brandon is a graduate of North Carolina State University with a four-years bachelor's degree. He's been in local government for eight years, has past experience in building, and is currently building his new home in Johnston County, has been awarded his level two probationaries by the Department of Insurance in all trades, all five trades. Brandon is a dad of two girls, six years and three years. Please welcome Brandon Lee.
I just like to appreciate the opportunity, Rich, and Mr. Robert has given me, and I look forward to serving the town of Clayton.
Part of the team. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Fire Advisory Board Annual Update.
Lee Barbie, Fire Chief. Ed cannot be with us tonight, so Matt Sefan is going to make the presentation, and then I'll follow up with some more notes for the advisor board.
Good evening, council and staff. Matt Sefan, Clayton Fire Advisory Board. You clicking? All right. So I've done this in a passion. Our purpose is, our main purpose is to assist with communication between chief, council, and our members of the department. Most of our duties consist of assisting with pre-planning budget and preparing budget, assisting with the growth of the department, and to continue our level of service as we grow. The advisory board is made up of seven members. We have three members that are part of the department and four that are residents, two Claytex and two Clayton. Currently, we have one vacant, but sitting on the board now is myself, Karen Patterson who's a Clayton resident, Ed Aldridge who's also a Clayton resident, Brian Maynard, Claytex. We have a vacant Claytex, and then Paul Zeiss, Fire Engineer. Matt Vesey is one of our part-time firefighters. We meet the fourth Thursday of odd number of months, with the exception of November exchanges due to Thanksgiving. In 2019, some of our accomplishments and milestones, we hosted Eastern Carolina Firefighters Association, which is all the departments east of us. One of our big goals, you know, in the town and throughout the department is partnerships with local businesses. So we partnered with CAT. They hosted the event with our assistance. We had Senator Bergen was there, State Fire Marshal Mike Causey, along with OSFM attended. The board said it was the largest turnout they've had in years, if they can even remember. We had over approximately 150 people is what I counted at one time, maybe more. And we received high praise from the board members about the event. They applauded us for doing what we did. We also helped with the 2019 and 2020 budget, and one of the big things coming out is our staffing changes in 2020 that y'all approved. We purchased a new piece of fire apparatus that replaced a 2,000 Pierce Saber Pumper. Now, the new one is a Pierce Enforcer that is a sister truck of Engine 1 that we got a year ago. It holds 1,000 gallons of water. It'll flow 1,500 gallons per minute, and we also carry a 2,000 gallon dump tank that we can use in our unhydrated areas. Also has extrication capabilities for wrecks and stuff. Looking ahead, we look to continue to have an open line of communication between our staff and y'all and the fire chief, continue to adapt and grow with the town of Clayton as we go from the small town to the medium-sized town. Any questions? Thank y'all.
I'd like to recognize Karen Patterson. She is with us tonight, one of our advisory board members. So during budget time, there was a conversation about, um, left me notes. I was about to say Fire Advisory Board, but Public Safety Advisory Board. So the chief and I have had some conversations. The Fire Department Advisory Board, we already have a calendar. We have our bylaws in place. So what we'd like to do is invite Chief Mahin to our next advisory board meeting and begin discussions of how we transition from a working board that's Fire Department to a Public Safety Advisory Board. Transition, what I'm saying by that, we have a vacant position now, so we could look at how we would fill that, complementing the police department side of it. And then as we go through, when tenures expire, we can look at how do we need to revamp those, to change them, to have a share of Fire Department and Police Department advisory board members as we move forward. So that's kind of our game plan to move forward, to transition from a single board to a multi-department board, fire and police, to be a public safety board. And any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a comment. I think that's really a great idea. The only concern that I would have would be, couldn't that be somewhat advantageous to the police department with respect to the annual softball game?
I won't let you ask that.
I couldn't let that one go by.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda will be public hearings. First item will be 2019-144 ANX, which is the Town of Clayton Regional Wastewater Pretreatment Facility.
And we would like to continue this to the August 19th meeting, please.
Okay, we will note that. And since I noted this as a public hearing, I would just defer that to the August 19th meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Next item on the agenda is 2019-142RZ, lots eight and nine of Southern Regional.
As stated, this is rezoning request 2019-142RZ, and this is the rezoning for lots eight and nine at Southern Regional, which is off of US Highway 70. And the lot sizes are 1.60 and 2.76 acres. And it is currently vacant land. If you had driven by there and seen the signs, there is a sign out there that says Southern Village, a brick sign with a fence. This is the current zoning map. As you can see, it's currently Zoned B3. The proposed zoning, the applicant would like to rezone it to I1. And the consistency with the comp plan 2040, it is listed as employment center, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The zoning would be consistent as it does abut I1 as well as B3, so either zoning would be appropriate. The B3 at Southern Village is more of your retail and different mixture of use type at that location, and then this is proposed to be I1. It is consistent, like I said, with the surrounding uses of industrial, commercial, and there is some vacant property. And they did address the approval criteria listed in our ordinance. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, and the planning board also recommended approval of this rezoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? This being a public hearing, I will now open it up to the floor. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address, please. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council. Councilman Thompson.
Mr. Mayor Protem, after considering the recommendations of the planning board and planning director, I move to approve case number 2019-142-RZ, lots eight and nine, Southern Regional, and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in the agenda packet.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be 2019-143RZ, Rose Street Commercial Development.
Again, good evening, Samantha Wollanwaber, Planning Director. This is a rezoning for the Rose Street properties. The project, as we call it, is at the corner of Rose Street and US 70 Business, and also does front something on Tulip Street. And the address is 9811 US Highway 70 Business. And currently, the existing use is single-family residential, and there's some vacant property as well. The applicant is Mr. Andrew Wilson. And just for reference, you can see to the right of the highlighted properties, that is the Sheets gas station. This is the current zoning map. It is currently Zoned R8, and it is right beside B3, which is the Sheets. And B3, the Sheets, does have a special use district overlay on top of it, but this is just a general rezoning from R8 to B3, and that is the request of the applicant. And this is an overall, I wanted to zoom out so you could see the overall zoning in the area, because there is residential, but as along Highway 70, it is a major commercial thoroughfare. It is a major road. So there is mainly commercial along and fronting on Highway 70, as you can see, most of the red, and then the pink is the industrial. So everything is somewhat of all commercial or office or industrial in this area. And across the 70, across the railroad tracks is Gassy Lee, gas station, shopping mall, strip mall. And consistently with the comp plan 2040, it is community mixed-use and neighborhood center, which does encourage a mixture of uses. So this would, the rezoning to B3 for commercial, that has a lot of different uses in it. It could be office, retail, restaurant, number of different things. And it is consistent with all the other commercial-type properties in the area and the uses. The applicant has addressed the approval criteria. Staff recommended approval of the rezoning request, and planning board also recommended approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? I actually have one. In the neighborhood meeting summary form, there was a note that, there was mention made at a previous rezoning meeting for Sheets, that the town council said if this block was to be rezoned to commercial, the entire block would need to be rezoned. Can you speak to that?
I was not aware of that comment. Again, when Sheets was done, I was not here, I was not with the town of Clayton, but that's not, that decision would not be binding on this council, and generally, rezonings are not conditioned, so that would not have been something that would have been able to be, it may have been discussed at that point in time when Sheets was rezoned, but that's not something that, it would have been conditioned, because it wasn't a conditional zoning, we don't have conditional zoning in our code. So that was a little something different.
Okay.
This is just for the four properties that the applicant has applied for. If anyone else wants to rezone their property, they're more than welcome to submit an application, and we can review it.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Thank you. Okay, we'll now hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Wyatt Thone. I'm with Bowler Engineering from Raleigh, North Carolina. We're here to represent the developer. Any questions you might have, I'm happy to answer.
Any councilman, bond?
Yes, sir. Noticed your neighborhood meeting is kind of alluding to what Mayor Protem Granis was just talking about, but you had a meeting on July 19th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Three attendees?
Yes.
Four questions?
Yes.
And in the packet, I can't find no answers.
In general, we're just collecting information from the neighbors. A lot of these questions were types of things that will be addressed when the actual site plan is submitted, such as drainage concerns. The engineering department would review.
So you did answer all four questions?
We just advised the public on how the process would be handled in the future.
So this- You addressed that with us tonight.
Sure. So the drainage concerns, when the actual site plan comes in for development, those would be dealt with through engineering. The civil engineer would address the drainage leaving the site, and then the engineering department here at Clayton would review the design to confirm that it wouldn't cause any downstream flooding and meets the intent of the UDO. Except to Tulip Street. I'm looking at my handwritten notes here, so give me one moment. Exit onto, so the exit onto the adjoining street would also be reviewed by the town to ensure that it meets the requirements that they wish to have, and it would also be reviewed by DOT during the driveway permit process. We had a comment that we wrote down, one of the others, neighbors was interested in selling. That doesn't really apply to this request. One of the other neighbors noted that there is a Rose Road extension project the DOT has on their TIP projects. That's something that will have to be accounted for when the site plan is developed. They will have to take into account a future right-of-way that project has. Let's see. And then there was some comments about neighbors being concerned about commercial abutting their residential, and that would be handled by the appropriate buffer as prescribed by the Clayton Town Code.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Since that been listed as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and give us your address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council. Councilman Thompson.
After considering the recommendations of the planning board and planning director, I move to approve case number 2019-143RZ, Rose Street Commercial Development, and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in the agenda packet.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The agenda is under New Business, and that would be the 2019 Governor's Highway Safety Program.
Mr. Mayor Protem, with your permission, before we do that, mind if I bring Morgan up so I can introduce her? Is that just appropriate time? As Morgan comes back up to the stand here, before I put her on the spot, I'll just reiterate, you know, Morgan is a recent hire to us. She comes with no experience right out of BLET, but she has a college education. She's very excited to be here, and she's jumped in with both feet. So I normally prep them to come up here, so Morgan, if you'll just say a couple words to council, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. I'm very excited to be a part of the town of Clayton. I've been wanting to do law enforcement for as long as I can remember, so I'm very excited to be on with Clayton Police Department, and I'm very excited for all I've learned and all I've continued to learn. Thank you.
Welcome to the team. We certainly appreciate what you're going to do for us.
Thank you.
So as part of New Business here, this is, the adoption of this resolution is us entering into year two of the three-year Governor's Highway Safety Program grant that we received last year. So I would ask that y'all adopt that so we can formally enter into that agreement and receive funding for our second year of this grant. Here, word you said. Okay. I'm sorry. Well, I stepped back. I thought it was too loud. But the resolution is for us to enter into the second year of the three-year Governor's Highway Safety Program grant that we received last October. So adoption of that just allows us to formally enter in that agreement so we can receive funds, reimbursement funds for salary.
What do we typically use these funds for?
So this grant that we received last year was a personnel and equipment grant. So with that grant, we were able to purchase a vehicle for that, for the officer that's in that position, radio, computer, lots of equipment, radar, all the things that would go with him enforcing the elements of the grant. So it's all related to highway safety. We also had a commitment from the Governor's Highway Safety that last year was an 85 15% matching salary grant, so we were in for 15%. They paid 85. This year, it's a 75 25, where they still pay the lion's share. Next year, it'll go to a 50 50 match, and then beyond that, we own that individual 100% and to do, and equipment to do with as we see fit. So this year, it'll be a 75 25 salary grant only, and training. The equipment's already purchased, that was done last year. So much smaller amount, but pays for 75% of his salary.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to adopt for a resolution 2019-34.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda will be staff reports, town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My report actually is just an update to let you all know and the community know some things that are happening with, between the town of Clayton and our Johnston County partners. So today, they took action at their morning meeting that rescinded an action they had taken last year related to our ETJ. Just for the benefit of the audience, the town has an extraterritorial jurisdiction that is one mile by statute, but several years ago, by statute again, we are authorized to extend that an additional mile, so we have a two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. The county commissioners do have a say-so in those actions, and last year, they took a vote to take back that extra mile, and they wanted to have some conversations with us about how we were enforcing some things in the ETJ, and we've been able to provide that information to them and satisfy them to that degree. And so today, they took the action to take back that action, if that makes sense. So that action took effect today. The other thing that's going on with the county is we received a request through the county from-
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-34.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda will be staff reports, town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My report actually is just an update to let you all know and the community to know some things that are happening with, between the Town of Clayton and our Johnston County partners. So, today, they took action at their morning meeting that rescinded an action they had taken last year related to our ETJ. Just for the benefit of the audience, the town has an extraterritorial jurisdiction that is one mile by statute, but several years ago, by statute again, we are authorized to extend that an additional mile, so we have a two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. The county commissioners do have a say-so in those actions, and last year, they took a vote to take back that extra mile, and they wanted to have some conversations with us about how we were enforcing some things in the ETJ, and we've been able to provide that information to them and satisfy them to that degree. And so, today, they took the action to take back that action, if that makes sense. So, that action took effect today. The other thing that's going on with the county is we received a request through the county from one of our industry partners, Griffles, to expand the RTZ, which is the zoning designation that allows some of those industries to benefit from some tax breaks where they don't pay city taxes, but they do pay into the workforce development center that builds the workforce here in Johnston County. And that area is established, but to expand that area requires consent from both the council, Town Council of Clayton, if it's in our ETJ, and then also the county commissioners. And we've, the county manager and I have had several discussions over the last year or so about what that would mean, and today, the county commissioners are considering a memorandum of understanding to work with this council that would allow this council to consider, possibly as soon as your next meeting in August, a vote to expand the RTZ to include the new acreage that Griffles purchased last year. Again, we'll wait till we have that in hand before we can take any action on it, but just wanted to make the council aware that that's, the county commissioners are taking that action today and are considering getting a memorandum of understanding in front of you all for the potential for you all to consider that RTZ expansion, and we will keep you up to date as that happens.
Thank you. County attorney?
No report.
County clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Other staff?
Hey, good evening, just in case you didn't hear from me enough tonight, I've got one more little thing. So, this is discussion about non-conforming sites, it has been brought up at council meetings, and this past spring, early summer, my staff worked on an inventory of non-conforming sites. We have a map made, I did not provide the map, but we have a map made, and we have a list of what we think are all the non-conforming sites. I kind of wanted to go over what a non-conforming site was very quickly, and the different types of violations that my department enforces, because it can be very confusing, and it might be helpful to people watching. So, we have two different types of violations that the planning department covers, we have zoning violations, we have nuisance violations. Zoning violations are going to be, you see the stick-in-the-ground signs, we pick those up on a regular basis if they're in the right-of-way, and non-permitted use, storage building without a permit, illegal fence, the fence is too tall, those type of thing, and dumpster that's not screened. And most of those are complaint-driven. All of our zoning enforcement is complaint-driven, or if we happen to see it in the field, but our zoning officer is not in the field all the time, so it's complaint-driven, so it's reactive. And we can do zoning enforcement in town, excuse me, and in the ETJ. So, then we have nuisance, I don't know, I just run my throat here. And nuisance, we can only do in-town limits. And nuisance is going to be your tall grass, junk and debris, trash, like trash not inside of the trash can, stagnant water, graffiti, those type of situations are nuisance enforcement. And that is actually proactive, we send those out without being complaint-driven. So, if people can call in complaints, or if we see it in the field, our code enforcement officer is in the field all day long unless he's doing administrative work, sending letters out, or scheduling cleanup, that type of thing. So, those are the two type of violations that we do. So, now it's going to non-conforming site. A non-conforming site can have nuisance violations and zoning violations on it. Generally, there's zoning violations, unless it's like a tall grass issue, we have some commercial sites with nuisance violations at this time, but most of your nuisance is going to be on residential property, and a lot of your zoning violations is going to be on commercial property. But they're not inclusive, or they don't exclude the other, you can have both. So, a non-conforming site can have a site element, something's wrong with it, it's missing a tree, a bush, a piece of sidewalk, it could be a fence issue, there's lots of different things, there can be one site element that's wrong with the site. Or it could be the use, the use is no longer allowed there, maybe it's been there, you know, 100 years, and that suddenly is what we call a legal non-conforming use. Or it could be the whole entire site, maybe the whole entire site is in violation. It's a junkyard, so the use is not approved, and then they have outdoor storage, and not allowed to have outdoor storage, they don't have the proper screening, there could be multiple different things. So, when we send violations, we send it for a specific item, we usually do not send it for the whole entire site, we send it for, they have cars parked in the right-of-way, like you'll see some of the car lots, that they moved the cars up past where they're supposed to, we will send a violation letter so they have to pull them back, because there are safe site triangles that they are in violation of there. Or another one would be if it's a new dumpster and it's not screened, or a fence they put up. There's lots of different elements of a site plan, or a site that can be considered non-conforming. So, we usually send it about one thing, unless there's multiple violations, and then we will send a letter about multiple violations to have them addressed. So, we generally don't send it about the whole site. So, I kind of just want to clarify that. So, it's very specific, when we send a letter, they know what they're in violation of. We can quote a specific section of ordinance and say, you're in violation of this, that, and the other, you have a certain amount of time to get it cleaned up. And we work with people, that's the goal, the goal of the letter is to get the communication going between the two parties, so we can get the site remedied and fixed. And then, there's grandfathering, we all know about grandfathering, everybody says I'm grandfathered, and there's not really a set time of when something's grandfathered, it really is at the interpretation of the zoning officer, code enforcement officer, or myself. Some things, you might say 15, 20 years is grandfathering, some five, some could be 100, so grandfathering, there's not a set time limit, which is kind of a, between a rock and a hard place, if you, really, to be honest, but grandfathering, there's not a set time. Now, in ordinance, we do have something that if there's a use on a property, and it's been 180 days, and they have been shut down, and that use is no longer allowed in that district, then they cannot do that use anymore, because it's been vacated. So, that's one way that we capture some of these illegal uses that are no longer allowed in certain districts. And a lot of times, we have to remember that the code changes. So, as we update our code in the next couple of years, when we finish, there may be some other things that people are out of compliance with, because since the town has been chartered, we, the codes have changed, so over time, things change and sites become non-conforming. But I'd just say on that, just to let you know, that since we are complaint-driven about a lot of these things, whenever we send somebody a violation letter, if they do complain about another site, we always will investigate it. So, sometimes that does open up the door to other complaints, but that's what we are here for, so if someone ever does complain, and then they have a valid complaint about another property, we will handle it the same. But it's kind of, there's a lot of zoning violations out there and nuisance, and we are working on those every day, but if anybody has anything, they will, you always send it to me, we'll be very proactive and look into it. Clear as mud?
So, I have a question. If you happen to have a repeat violator, how, what's the process?
So, we do have a chronic violator section in our ordinance, it's three times, if they did something three times within the previous year, then the next year, it's not within the same timeframe, it's three violations the previous year, then you can just send one letter the next year and get it taken care of.
Does the violation Samantha have to be on the one item, or is it three violations, and then, if it's three new violations, is that a chronic, or is that considered separate?
So, the way that I interpret it is, it has to be the same offense, it has to be three tall grass, or three junk vehicles, or three junk and debris.
Do you have a question? Thank you. Any other staff? Seeing none, I'll now open it up to informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and give us your address, and if you would, please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, I will turn it over to town council, for council comments. Okay. Seeing none, I will then ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Move.
Second. To go into closed session, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.